Full. Oh, we did have. A full set of commissioners. And so we don't need any alternates. First order of business is approval of minutes, minutes of June 21st meeting. I don't know what we have here. There were a couple of typos. Did they get fixed, Mike?
Yes, they did.
I'm just making sure they're helpful right now. Pull your other pack.
Well, I printed mine at three o'clock. And I didn't see any typos in it, so I'll move that these minutes were satisfactory.
Okay, I'll second. Second, thank you, Kevin. Any comments? All in favor? Hi. Obeying. No, so carry six, nothing. Thank you very much. We have two public hearings tonight. And the first public hearing is a text amendment to the industrial zoning regulations. Amendment that we made. So.
Chairman, can you read the call to the public hearing?
Um, no. But didn't we approve that already?
We approved that already.
Are you reading the wrong amendment?
I printed this.
Yeah, yeah, but it's not.
It's not.
It's not. He's referring to the. He may need this.
Yep.
But then I'll need it back.
Okay.
First application is 2115.
Mike?
I want to get another paper copy.
All right, I got a little bit of paper cut.
Right, well, I'll still read the. All for the public hearing.
For the Avon Marketplace.
Right. Application 21-15 of Avon Marketplace Investors LLC. Owner David Simmons, applicant for special exception pursuant to section 4.5 of the zoning regulations for change of use from retail to educational. Run three, run. See, it's Russian school mathematics. At the property located at 530R Bushy Hill Road, assessors map B20 block 508 lot 002A, zone B3.
Thank you. Mike, who's the applicant here?
Simmons is here on behalf of the applicant. He should be on Zoom. Dave, are you?
Yes, I am. Yep, can you hear me?
Yes, yes.
Okay, hi, I'm Dave Simons. I'm with Moser Pile on Nelson Architects. I'm the applicant. Also on Zoom is David Waldman. He's the owner of the property. And we also have a representative from the Russian School of Mathematics as well, just in case there's any questions about their program or schedule. And so if, if you'd like me to quickly explain the project, we submitted floor plans of the tenant space. This project is interior only. It's the existing, or what was the pet value space. It's being converted to a tutoring, after-school tutoring program. So in the eyes of the zoning and talking with Mr. Gwiddan, I understand that that is an educational use. The building code does treat that as, as business, but, you know, from a code standpoint, all allowable use. And again, this is interior tenant improvements only. They're going to be putting in five classrooms, small teachers lounge, administrative office, and one additional bathroom to serve the space. Believe, there's a statement of use that we included with the application. Their hours of operation are in the afternoon into the evening. And over, at any given time, there could be as many as 72 students within the facility. But my understanding is that they cycle the classes, so it's not, all the kids aren't coming in and leaving at one time, so they do have a staggered schedule. And again, I just want to reiterate, this is interior only. There's no exterior changes to the building.
Okay. Questions of the commission?
Well, as far as signage, you're just going to replace the similar sign from what's there? I didn't see anything in the signage in there.
Yeah, the, typically with these turnovers, the tenants would handle the signage. We don't have, at least I represent the landlord, we don't have any information on what the signage is going to be, but obviously that would be a separate permit and would need to meet the regs.
Where exactly is it? Where's?
It's where we're.
If you're familiar with that building, that's part of the Avon Marketplace parcel. It's the back building. It's a 10,000 square foot building. When you're facing the front, this is the furthest left tenant space. It's underneath that arched brick gable end or brick facade.
At the other end of that building is burglar fine across the. That's the only park that's in St. Mary's. The rest of it's same.
Yes, correct.
I see where it is now. I just couldn't see it.
Okay, so there's plenty of parking around that area anyway. Okay, is there?
Go ahead, Bruce.
I have just a quick question. I'm not familiar with your program. I wondered if you have other locations in this area. It's not the architectural firm, the Russian tutoring program.
Yeah, I'll let, I'll let.
Yeah, if you allow. Hi, everyone. My name is Nias. I'm a senior project manager for the program. So this location is going to be our third one in the state of Connecticut. The closest to Avon would be the one in, we call it RSM Rocky Hill, but it is actually located in Weathersfield. So it is about the same size, 3,200 square feet, and it's pretty packed now. So the program is going to serve the mostly elementary and middle school aged students. This is entirely mathematics, no STEM, nothing like that. Like Dave has mentioned, our operation hours are off hours, three to nine during the weekdays, and 8:00 AM till 6:00 PM during weekend. So again, usually traffic is concerned, but we have more than 60 locations across the country now, and we have vast experience on staggering the classes in the best expedient way, so that there are no more than two classes starting and ending within the same 10 or 15 minutes. The parents are strictly encouraged to run their errands elsewhere, not to wait for their kids on the parking lot. Plus, many of them, around 30% of the parents would carpool. So that's what we try to do to reduce the parking and traffic load on any location we are at. Any further questions?
Quick follow. How long have you been in, in that Weathersfield location?
Weathersfield location, we've been there since 2000, yeah, 2016. So we have just, we have just renewed there after completing our first, the initial five-year term. But overall, the business is there for 20 plus years.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions from any of the other commissioners? Do we have any people in the public who want to speak to this application? Is that even public here? Did we receive anything by, by not to this application? Okay. I don't hear anything. Anybody have any questions or comments? Are we satisfied with the application?
Yes.
Anne, what do you think? Anne? You're on mute.
You're muted, Anne.
Muted. While we're waiting, Mike, you have any comments?
Am I unmuted now?
Oh, you're unmuted, yes.
Okay, I was just trying to say I'm having trouble hearing you, Dave, and the folks that are in the library, although I can hear people who are on Zoom just fine. I think you asked me if I had anything further to add, and I really don't. I think it's a, it's a very worthwhile positive use of the facility. And I was, a question that I had was, but he already said that you had said just mathematics. I was going to ask if there was going to be mathematics and language as well, but I think you already addressed that.
Right. Mike Doyle, any comments?
Mr. Chairman, I, I noticed that, you know, we've run this through the building officials and fire marshal in town, so, you know, my safety concerns have met, and there is a similar use already in the Avon Marketplace, right? So, you know, there's already a roadmap for us that we've, we've accomplished. We've made this change or this exception before, so.
Good, thank you. Donna? You're muted.
Yeah, I can get in there. I, I agree with the, the two former comments, so I think it's a good use of the space, and I have no problem with it.
Okay, are we ready to close the, close the public hearing?
Chairman, I make a motion that we close the public hearing for application 2115.
I'll second it.
Mike Doyle, any comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any abstain? It's closed, six, nothing, okay.
Thank you very much, everyone.
Very much. We then consider it later on. Application 2116.
Okay, application number 2116 of Stardust LLC, owner LADA PC LLC, agent for special exception pursuant to section 4.5 of the zoning regulations for the construction of a self-storage facility at the property located at 20 Terrifield Road, assessors map 106, block 439, lot 16A, zone B1.
Thank you. Terry, you want to present?
Sure. Terry Han, principal, LADA PC land planners, we're the site planners for the project. The, if you could put up the zoning presentation, that'd be great. With me also this evening is Tim Kuhn, who is the engineer from JR Russo, and also Steven Antonio, representing the ownership group. Steven is online, Tim is in person. So the property is located at 20 Terrifield Road, which is currently occupied by the Old Well Restaurant. There are four existing structures on the property, the Old Well Restaurant, two residences, and a garage. The property is, where Terrifield Road and the Old Well are, it's relatively flat, and then it drops down to a lower meadow and then eventually down to the apartment river. The property is 12.7 acres in size. Would be the, I'm driving, you dropped off today. You guys get that?
Should.
You can do the site plan resubmission, that's fine. It's not quite the same order, but it doesn't have my nice color rendering. Now on the next lap, we'll bring our own laptop and connect it, and then we can show the screen directly.
And where the site plan?
Yes, please.
Chairman, just for the, for the commission's purpose, so this, this application was before the conservation commission. They've secured it in the wetlands permit, and earlier this evening, they might put with the sign review board, received a favorable recommendation. So this is their last step, their last stop tonight.
We saw this earlier.
And they came before you did a preliminary presentation. What was, Terry, maybe you could talk about what's changed since the preliminary presentation?
Chair, I'll go then. If I was speaking, then eventually before you show up. Okay, from the preliminary application, really what we focused on was stormwater, quite honestly. The initial ideas were to try and do maybe something interesting, of course pavement, something, you know, that wasn't solid pavement. It is a self-storage facility, so we need to be able to drive around the buildings. And our conversations with the town engineer were such that that was not the most desirable choice. And he actually felt that we needed to provide detention and infiltration, and so therefore we went into a more conventional system. When that occurred, the overall impervious surface was reduced, it was more compacted, and we were able to provide an infiltration basin that the team could talk about shortly. So the overall project includes 11 buildings, totaling approximately 48,000 square feet of self-storage. They're all single-story buildings. Some of them have shed roofs, some of them have gable roofs. The two in the middle there, which are buildings eight and nine, that have all the little notches for doors, those are climate-controlled buildings, so they have corridors and regular doors. The, to the right of the buildings, you can see a solid kind of a curved edge right there. That area from, it's a filter strip in accordance with the state of Connecticut's Stormwater Manual, and then we have an infiltration basin. Continuing to the east, there is an existing driveway, and then there is some additional land with trees, and eventually that falls down into the lower meadow and eventually down to the current river. So our real focus in terms of changes were, at one point, we were talking about putting the office inside the Old Well building. That ends up not being the case at this point. It's going to be a 24/7 small automated kiosk, is the way they work now. And that's that tiny little building down at the entrance. We were also coming in from a different direction, and now, based on vehicle movement and comments from the fire marshal, we're coming in down more directly off of Terrifield Road. So those, those are kind of the big.
So you did make a change that you're not off of St. John's Place?
Oh, no, we are the, we're coming off of St. John's Place, but that's not our main entry. That's really more for emergency access. So our main entry is down approximately where that black block is. It says select an area to comment down.
Okay, so where's the kiosk now?
The kiosk is that tiny little square.
Oh.
Yep, right there. Yep. It's about a 10 by 10, you know, all windows with a, like a little ATM inside.
So is that a shared driveway with?
It is, it will continue to be a shared driveway. You then go, you veer to the right, and there are gates past the kiosk. There will also be a gate up on the upper level coming out, and that won't be, that's just emergency access gate. So everyone will circulate back through that one gate.
Okay, so I'm not following that.
Okay, so where that new area, where it says that gray area right there, that's also a connection through to the parking lot, but that's basically gated 100% of the time. It's emergency access.
Well, isn't it gated before the kiosk?
Yeah, it's gated technically after the gate. It's gated both directions, but it's, this is an in and out down at the lower level, and the upper level is strictly emergency access, so only the emergency vehicles would have access to that gate up on the upper level.
So I, I'm sorry. So we go in, turn right, there's a fence there. The black line is the fence, right?
Correct. Yes, I'm sorry. I don't know if anybody can see.
No, that's, that's good.
So, so we come in here, right? So you come in, you park, you go to the kiosk. Then you get back in your car, you go through the gate here, and then you go to wherever you're going to go in the buildings. Then you come back out this way. We were required to make this access, you know, for the fire department, but this would not be key card entry. This is emergency access only.
Okay, I was expecting the kiosk, that you actually dealt with the kiosk from inside your car, but you don't.
No, oh, no, 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 you still have to get out of your car. That's why there's a handicap space in that process. It's a, it's a self.
Versus the first time you came, there is no, no mania of this at all, so.
No, it's, if there's emergency components, there's already office space within the building, so, you know, if for some reason something happens.
And sales are done how?
Also all online.
Online?
Yeah.
Because I thought the original plan had some sales.
It did.
Materials.
Like moving material? No.
No, that's all done.
Nope. Much simplified.
Okay, thank you.
So then we prepared full erosion drill plans, which are set up to establish the infiltration basin first, so that that gets vegetated and does what it's supposed to do. It would not be used as temporary sediment basis, because we don't want to get clogged up with sediments. So that's, that's why it's set up that way. The, that's just layout, materials, we'll go down to the planting plan. The filter strip between the edge of the pavement and the infiltration basin is a series of meadow grasses and other elements in accordance with the stormwater manual. I was very surprised the stormwater manual did not allow us to put any shrubs in the filter strip. It says very clearly, you know, grasses, so we've got some meadow grasses, some wildflowers, a whole number of things. We were able to get some trees in there, and so we were addressing the filter strip accordingly. So basically the waterfall comes off, goes through the filter strip, and then ultimately into the filtration basin. Up in the northwest corner, we have extensive screen planting. All through that area, all those buildings are set, not at the 25-foot setback, but actually at a 30-foot setbacks, pulled it back a bit, so that that would provide us room to put planting along that back corner. The only other things that we're doing really is within the existing parking lot, we're just designating, cleaning up and making to code the handicap spaces, because they're not quite their little old school, and they don't quite meet the requirements. So that is part of that element. The curb cuts on Terrifield Road are designed to coordinate towns intend to put, extend the bike path along that area. So those are, those are set up to coordinate with the towns. If we can slide down to the utility plan, Tim can talk about the.
Oh, while you're on that one, so the properties to the east are part of this property or not, the meadow here?
The meadow is part of this property.
Okay.
Yes, but there is no, there's no, other than the replacement of the pipe to just clean up some erosion that's down there. We're not proposing to disturb anything down there.
Because then to go back to the bike path.
Yep.
You, I mean, you have a little island between the two.
Yes.
Parking lots. So there is space in there for.
Yeah, the.
For someone that is riding a bike and has to.
Yeah, it's going to go, it's, it's actually, you know, it's the big 10-foot space. They're, they're planning on getting a basement from property owner. It'll come down through here, and then I don't know, it does something here to connect it and go over the bridge. We're just trying to stay out of the way.
This kind of formalizes this driveway entrance. It's just a.
Oh, wide open.
Yeah, it's a big wide open area right now, so it kind of cleans it up and makes it official. We also ultimately have a lot of extra pavement, a lot of extra parking spaces out there, so that cleans this up as well. There is lighting proposed to.
I was just going to ask, maybe we're going to get to Terry, the number of units, number of buildings, number of units, it's just similar to what we saw a couple months back.
Yeah, yes. Yeah, no, there's nothing, there's no, no significant change in terms, it actually, the total number of buildings, not buildings, but the square foot section went down. We probably lost about 2,000 square feet in order to deal with the storm bridge. Did not get bigger. Lighting is wall-mounted units, the, we, it's a LED. This was in my other presentation, an LED dark sky compliant unit. It's not a wall-packed unit. It's actually a specific kind of light. The light poles on poles are on a nice round pole. It's now the LED, you know, where we used to call everything shoeboxes, now they're called slivers. Because it's just really a sliver of a light fixture, and there are only two of those just at the entrances. Rest of it is just within, and you can see it's not excessively lit. The, that's a vehicle turning movement, which was required by the fire department just to show what a fire truck, how a fire truck could come in and get through the project and out. There are more movements or different movements if you want to do it, but that's just an example.
Are they saying they could come in through the normal entrance?
Yeah, they, they could come through the, either the St. John's or through the.
No, through the, the.
Yep.
Terrifield Road.
They, they could come in that way. They probably want to come out.
Oh, they're coming out there.
Yeah, so they're, they're coming in on the regular entrance and then out on St. John's. Slide down to the utility plan, just regular details.
Good evening. As Terry mentioned, I'm Tim Kuhn, principal engineer with JR Russo and Associates, and I design the stormwater management system utilities for this project. The site has been graded so that the runoff from the development area sheet flows toward the east, which is toward our. Breaking inside of this plant, it will sheet flow and be intercepted by a level spreader at the edge of the parking lot. This level spreader is essentially just a stone, ditch filled with stone that will capture and then distribute it to the 25-foot wide vegetated filter strip, which is located between the edge of the pavement and the infiltration basin. The infiltration basin has been sized to recharge the majority of the runoff from the developed area of the site back into the sandy soils during larger storm events, which essentially we've determined that the basin itself will, there will be no discharge from basins for up to the two-year storm event. So only during larger storm events, there will be an overflow through an alley pipe at the south end down near Terrifield Road, and that, that'll get piped to a new discharge location, also down at the south, just at the edge of the existing wetland. In addition, we are also going to be installing some new stormwater inlets, yard drains, and catch basins to intercept the runoff which currently comes off of the existing parking lot of the Old Well. These will intercept it and divert it to a new treatment structure that we will be installing to provide treatment of this runoff where, prior to development, there was no treatment of the runoff from that parking lot. The entire system has been designed in accordance with the Connecticut Stormwater Volume Manual to provide treatment, groundwater recharge, and retention. Overall, the system results in a decrease in the peak discharge from the site, as well as a decrease in the overall runoff volume that leaves the site due to the large component that is being infiltrated back into the ground. due to the large component that is being infiltrated back into the ground. So after development, the discharge, both the rate and the volume will be below pre-development levels. Based on this and the, um, we will now be treating what was untreated runoff. Previously, we feel that the stormwater system, the development actually will provide a positive benefit to the quality of the runoff that goes down to the fire.
What if you consider treatment?
Okay, so treatments, the DEP actually has primary treatment measures. Um, our infiltration basin is considered a primary treatment measure, okay, with the pretreatment of the vegetated filter strip. So that's the treatment system for the developed area of the site. The, for the existing parking lot, they have actually designed, um, structures which are very simple. They're sized like catch basins and manholes. Uh, they're often referred to as high blood dynamic separators. And they're designed so that when water comes into them, it's, it kind of has a swirl action, um, so that it separates the solids and any sediment that's in the runoff and drives it to the bottom where it's stored. And then the cleaner water will flow out the top. So that's, um, a typical scenario for a treatment structure that will be used for that, that system parking lot.
Tim, specifically, what are you treating?
For, what treating for? Well.
Sediment, right?
Mainly it's total suspended solids. That's the main goal of the Connecticut Stormwater Quality Manual is to remove at least 80% of the stormwater or the total suspended solids in the runoff because most of the other pools are actually attached to those suspended solids. So these have been designed to remove, um, a minimum of 80% of the total suspended solids.
How deep is that basin?
Um, the basin itself, in order to provide cover under the, the pipes that go under the driveway, I think we're, we start at like three and a half feet. So we're coming into the basin and then I think, you have a detail, you do have a detail that shows.
The problem is that 152 is at the top, is that 155?
Yeah, it's not too.
It looks like a lot of lines, but I guess.
Yeah, no, those are one-foot contours.
Yeah, okay.
And, and they're at, um, they're, they're not, it's not terribly steep. Um, but, uh, it's a, it's a lot of area.
Oh, is it fenced on both sides?
It, it will be fenced on both sides. Yep. Yep, then we have a fence on this side that separates out the, um, use. Um, and then the other side, which remains part of the overall Stardust product, project. Uh, at this point, I think we'll be talking about putting a fence around that side as well. And just so, you know, we don't, we do not disturb past that existing gravel driveway and then therefore do not disturb any of the trees along that hill and on that side, um, in, in that area. Um, the existing pipe is being removed and the, the new pipe, it's just, it's a replacement. But it's not, it's not technically a new discharge in any fashion, right?
Yeah, and we're, we're replacing that discharge, um, in order to be able to provide the treatment structure because of the, currently the runoff from that parking lot just runs along the surface and we need to get, we need some elevation difference in order to get it to proper to our structure and have our, our treatment structure work properly. So, just lowering out.
Okay, commissioners, anybody?
Just a quick question first. The pathway of the runoff to the river. Could you point that out? Where exactly is the pathway to the runoff?
Could you scroll down a little? There we go. Okay, so both of the infiltration basin and the treatment structure will discharge to a manhole and then it will be piped to our new discharge location, which is, the old discharge location was right there. And then it just goes over land down to the river. Now, this location, the wetland line gets into the wetland. The wetland line doesn't show very clearly here, but it's in this area.
Why not there? What, what does the access, because there's some buildings at the north side of that other property. What is their access?
There, there's an existing driveway that goes back that, that will not be disturbed.
Okay, I just thought of an over your pipe there. That's what I was wondering.
Yeah, no, and we'll have, the pipe goes underneath.
Yeah, okay.
So dig it up and reset the pipe because right now the existing, show the existing pipe.
Yeah, it's kind of, just a pipe that's almost the exact same location underneath, underneath the, uh, the proposed.
Would that answer your question?
Yes.
We have a building?
Oh, yeah, that, it.
Elevations.
In the, yeah, it's, it's in the other presentation.
I was just wondering if you had anything from Terracille Road that we would see.
Yes. No, I don't have a, a view specifically, but it, it's, uh, the green color with green roof and, um, uh, green doors. Um, they're, the buildings are oriented, so they're not, you don't get a lot of flat views from, from Terracille Road. Um, so then that, they're stacked behind one another, so you wouldn't have any reason to see the whole project at any one time.
The, the one that's closest to Terracille Road would have access from both sides, right? Three doors on both sides?
Yeah. Yeah, the, the, by the one that you, I'm calling that, I guess, sample two, this one. Building number six. But again, the gable end is facing Terracille Road this way, so you've got a short side.
How does that work that you have a door on one elevation and then you have another door on the other?
There's a wall in the middle.
And there's nothing there for another unit?
Yep, yeah, no, they're, they're wide enough.
It does one way.
Oh, I can tell you, uh, we currently have two over at, um, you know, the, the existing facility to the north of this. And sometimes we have half and sometimes we have the double side. Um, so there, there's a wall that goes in the middle. The little doors that you see there, they are only about, um, three or four feet deep. So they don't, they don't interfere with the other ones that go back and forth.
Great. Questions? Who was the commission? Donna, Pam, Mike?
I just have one question. If, if we were to, so we're either voting on approving or disapproving this special exception based on this particular site plan. So if any additions were to be made, it would have to come back again, correct?
It's correct. If they expand further or modify this, this layout, they would back the foot commission.
Okay.
Or special exception or just a segment?
It would depend on, depend on the change. Um, we'd have to review it because if it's considered substantive, it would require a new special permit. Um, if it's a substantial change versus, you know, if it's, we're talking about we're adding a building within the existing paved area and you could still safely get around it and you're not really expanding the use to other portions of the property, I'd say that's, that would be handled by a site plan.
Okay. Thank you.
There's no phasing to this? It's all built 100%?
Um, the, uh, I, I think the owner's not 100% sure how they're gonna go forward with it. Um, that, you know, that it's all a financing component, um, you know, that it's, it might go one building at a time, but, you know, typically it's kind of start and stop.
How long would it take to build that?
Uh, it, it doesn't take particularly long. It's all pre-manufactured. Um, so you pour the footings and, um, you pour the floors.
Yeah, no, what I heard is you might build one building and then wait, build two or three later. Um, how long is this permit good for?
So they have five years to complete from the date of approval, which can be extended an additional five years.
So we can build it.
Worst case, they have 10 years to complete the work, but they'd have to request that extension, the additional five years.
We'd also need to tell you what we're doing because at that, at some point, if you did it that way, phased it, you would want a certificate of occupancy, which then we'd have to coordinate as to whether or not it would be allowed and what would need to be completed in order to do so. So it, it's more complicated for us to do it that way. It's a lot easier just to start and stop, like, you know, that's financing, so. It's not a national group doing this. It's, it's, you know, they're local folks.
Yeah. Okay, any other questions? Just one more.
I, I'm interested. You mentioned that the building's being manufactured after this step in the process. Um, what is it made of? It's this thing?
It's metal.
Yeah, it's all metal, so doors, sides, roof.
Okay, the public would like to speak to this application. Somebody's getting a three. I guess that's not speaking. Um, Mike, did we get any comments from?
Uh, nothing to this application from the public in writing.
Okay, any more comments from the commission and are we ready to close this public hearing? Mike, you ready?
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to close the, uh, public hearing.
I'll second.
Any comments from anybody? All in favor? Uh, opposed? Any abstaining? Nope. Six, nothing. It carries, we close. Yeah, a public hearing for 2116. Okay, uh, the next application, Mr. Vice Chairman, could you?
Application 21-17, after our brother's corporation owner, Chris Nelson, applicant for a special exception for alternative compliance plans for development of a multifamily. Multifamily unit housing development for plans provided to be located at 32 and 36 Iron Horse Boulevard, Assessor's Map H09, Block 226, Block 006, and Assessor's Map H09, Block 226, Map 008 plus EA Zone SC5.
Thank you. Someone wants to come and speak to us?
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and commission members. My name is Joe Williams. I am a lab use and environmental lawyer with Shawnee Goodwin in Hartford. And I'm proud to be here before you this evening representing Chris Nelson and his partners on a project that we are very excited about and we believe the entire town since Barry will be proud of. After a brief introduction by me, you will hear from Chris Nelson. Uh, we'll tell you more about the sort of history leading up to the project and the development of the vision for it. Uh, then I'll turn to Mark Aragoni. He's the head of landscape architecture with SLR Engineering and he'll go over the, the details of the development plan. Next will be Jack Kemper, the architect for the project. And then Greg Ugaldi, also a partner in the project, also accomplished home builder and the immediate past president of the National Association of Home Builders, who will tell you a little bit more about the project and especially the affordable rental component for it. We, uh, like, like you, the commission, our presentation team is partly here with you in person and partly on Zoom. Uh, I believe we should also have on Zoom our civil engineer with SLR, Andrew Borowski, our traffic engineer, David Sullivan from SLR, both of them available for questions as needed. Um, along with Jeremy Browning with Trio Properties, who was also a partner in the project. He's an apartment leasing expert, runs a property management firm that will be in charge of leasing and managing the property for the long term. So he, he's involved in the project as well and is here to answer any questions that may come up. And I also want to note that Mike Gerard with Sims Croft Echo Corporation, the owner of property, is here as well this evening. So, um, as for the other members of the team, you really have an A-team here that's capable of delivering a first-class community that will be a long-term asset to the town of Sims Berry. And just for technical components, Mr. Chairman, I believe we have given you all required plans, studies, applications, and other materials. All required notices have been given. I submit the affidavit this evening on the posting of the signs. Uh, our team has met with town staff and received comments from them and we have no problems with any of the comments we've received. Uh, we met twice with the Architectural Review Board, including this evening, and received a favorable recommendation from the ARB tonight. And we have also obtained a wetlands permit from the Conservation Commission. So we are ready to go. Um, just a few words at a higher level about our proposals. Uh, we propose 175 apartment units in five buildings and a clubhouse to be constructed on the former Sims Croft Echo Construction Yard. As I said, Chris Nelson will go a little more into the history of the development of the property and the vision for it. Uh, I'd like to say that it's really impressive to me how this proposal has come together from the charrette that the town conducted through the plan that you adopted, through your zoning regulation to this application. It really is very rare, in my experience of about 27 years in Landry's Lot, Connecticut, that a town is able to figure out what it wants, state what it wants clearly, and then get what it wants from the private sector in relatively short order. Um, and I, I think you should commend it for it. I believe you also, also will find that our plan brings to life the vision that was articulated by the community and by this commission in a thoughtful way, with a design that is sensitive to the adjacent environmental resources in the meadows, respectful to its neighbors, especially the Performing Arts Center, which supports the application, complements the town center both architecturally and economically, and will liven it by revitalizing and activating a key property in the town center. Uh, a design that is committed to energy efficiency and sustainability, which you'll hear more about tonight, and one that voluntarily desecrates 10% of the units at affordable rents so that people like our nurses, our teachers, our first responders, who are the heroes in getting us through the pandemic, can live in a beautiful place like this, which of course they deserve to do. The site is an excellent location, as you can see. It's an excellent location for multifamily housing and was specifically zoned for it by you, of course, uh, coming out of the charrette, giving it the SC5, Sims Berry Center 5 designation. Uh, our plan complies with the design goals and intent of the Sims Berry Center Code and the provisions of the SC5 zone. Um, Mark from SLR will discuss the front street setback and what we've done there. We believe it complies with the intent of the regulation, but to the extent that it's a slight variation, it can be approved by this commission under the Alternative Compliance Section in the SC5 zone, which would be true for any other slight deviations in the plan as well. So that's my overview. Unless any questions from you, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to bring up Chris Nelson.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Joe. Um, it's interesting, no microphone here. Uh, good evening, Mr. Chairman and commissioners. My name is Chris Nelson. Uh, my office is in the Sims Berry Chris Mill, 75 West Street. It's the next Mill Rights, um, West Street. And we have been building and developing in town for approximately 10 years. I, one project dates back about 25 years, but, uh, we've had an office here for 10 years, which includes the, the, um, Mill Commons and Mill Pond Crossing, which are behind, uh, Sims Berry Chris Mill. And I know many of you were around and part of that approval, uh, which has been really wonderful. As well as Carson Way, which really was a takeover from Ensign Bickford, from Powder Forest Homes. Um, but that's a 74-unit planned community, beautiful homes. Um, that's going very well now. Um, as well as Highcroft, which is a 217-year luxury apartment community on Powder Forest Drive. So we've been doing a bunch of work in town over the past 10 years. We've, um, it's been spaced out, but we're really excited to be here again. Um, and finally, here on this project to present, uh, what our vision is. Otherwise, it's a wonderful site and a lot of potential. We want to create something that's not just another residential development, but something special. Um, and something that is a valued part of the Sims Berry Center. And I think we, you certainly can do that. To get things started, I think, uh, just give you a little bit of history. Um, if one of the packets you receive is a blue packet and if you care to follow on the packet, you can see a better map than that's on the screen. Um, if you'd like to look at the screen, that's fine too. But, uh, you can see the site on the screen right now. It's outlined in red. Just to the right of it are the athletic fields and the Performing Arts Center, Band Shell, um, the Spur Park Playground there, the Dog Park. And a little lower on the screen or on the map, you can see the town hall and the library where we are now along Main Street. But this gives a great overview of how central it really is. But this gives a great overview of how central it really is in the Sims Berry Center. Joe referenced the Sims Berry Charrette in two thousand and eleven. That charrette really took a hard look with a lot of community involvement. Where should Sims Berry Center go and what could it be? And from that charrette, there came a design document and from that, a, I'm not sure the exact process, but a Sims Berry Center code. This property was a key discussion point in that process. And in fact, this property is the only property with a SC five designation. It does allow three and four-story buildings exclusively residential with coverage requirements where they want seventy percent of the frontage of the internal roads to have building frontage. So they're talking about a very urban-esque plan for this property. That brings density into the community and starts to get a little bit more of a semi-urban. I mean, Sims Berry is not an urban area, but a little bit of urban feel along Iron Horse Boulevard. For more than thirty years, this property is owned by Sims Croft Echo Farms. It's a site construction yard. I'm sure you're probably all familiar with it. You probably see it every time you walk down the rails to trails, the Heritage Trail there. Dump trucks, construction garages, piles of dirt, piles of gravel, all part of a thriving business, which was fine, but it can be so much more. Mike Gerard, who has been a friend and has, we've worked together on a number of projects for fifteen to twenty years. He's worked with both me and he's worked with Gregory Galdi for T and M Homes. He's often talked to us about, hey, when are you guys going to get together and develop this project? And there were a number of reasons it just wasn't right as far as timing goes. Sims Croft Echo Farms had to move its construction operations. There was a bunch of demolition work that needed to happen after that. Any site like that where you have dump trucks and chemicals and oils, you just don't know what's there. So we had to do some extensive environmental research just to find out how complicated this was going to be. There was FEMA mapping that had been started in two thousand and fifteen, correcting some of the grade lines and the floodway lines through FEMA and still ongoing. And then there were some prior residential concepts that were presented, brought some in. And frankly, we as builders looked at them, and they were kind of a mix of single and multi-family townhomes, some ownership, some rental, extremely hard for a builder that does either single family or multi-family to get their arms around, extremely hard for a bank to finance. So there were some, it might work in Boston really well, but here it was a tough sell for us to commit into that type of a plan. So we needed to reprogram it in a way that we could have confidence that we could do a great job and it would be successful. And that's really why what we're proposing is strictly a rental product, but that's in reaction to market. For example, Highcroft, probably seventy-five percent of the renters at Highcroft right now, and I'm one of the owners in Highcroft, could easily buy a five or six hundred thousand dollar house, but they're not choosing to do that. They're choosing a lifestyle community that gives them the gym and the pool and other things and a place where they can lock the door and not worry about mowing the lawn and go to Florida for a few months if they want to. So the whole kind of the move might change, but the market has moved. It took us eight or nine years at Mill Pond Crossing to sell twenty townhomes. And that just isn't, granted, we went through a recession, but things have moved a little bit. So this is good for the town, and frankly, it's going to be a beautiful project. So anyway, about a year ago, we started to get serious about doing what needed to be done. Sims Croft has moved and finished moving its construction operations. The demolition work is now completed. Environmental studies were done. There was some cleanup necessary, but it was mostly not super complicated, and the Gerards were willing and able to get that all cleaned up so it exceeds Connecticut residential guidelines. The FEMA mapping is now completed, and we've reprogrammed this in a way that we feel really good about. So what are we proposing? Joe had said one hundred and seventy-five unit luxury rental community. We've worked with the SC five code guidance, and some of that's prescriptive. We've also referenced in design the charrette and what it was telling us or suggesting. We've tried to build as much green space as possible, and the site design is environmentally sensitive. In fact, I think Mark will tell you that we're significantly exceeding the water call, water treatment quality that is required. We've worked with design, we've reworked, and they've been really good in helping us or challenging us to do better on some of the Sims Berry architectural vernacular. And so we're excited about that. Jack will show you that. And as far as building, we really intend to raise the bar as far as energy efficiency, sustainability, and the way that we can lower the carbon footprint. And one example of that, and it's something that I think most of us are realizing we need to do, just by taking all that, all those units and going to electric, super-efficient heat pumps is actually reducing our carbon usage with natural gas or oil. So that's, it sounds counterintuitive, but it's actually the most efficient way we can do things right now. And it's just changing the way we think a little bit and the way we build. We're also extremely energy efficient as far as insulation and air control. So a couple of other things, there's some affordability, and there's also a path that Greg is going to talk about and Mark is going to talk about. I do want to introduce a very, very good friend of mine, Greg Ugaldi, Greg's president of T and M Homes. He's also, we're both extremely active in the Home Builders Association. I've been the state president and our past chair. He's the national past chair. But more important than that, we're both housing advocates. We want to do things right. We both have graduate master building designations, which is really showing that we want our companies to run us professionally, just in the top, top of the class as far as that goes. We're also certified green professionals, meaning we're a little geeky as far as energy efficiency and just pushing the boundaries a little bit. That's kind of what we want to do. And here's a phenomenal opportunity because in Sims Berry, we can afford to give it. You can read Greg's resume. It's pretty impressive, but I think I should get to know him, get to like and working around here. I know he's done some stuff with T and M and town, but this is going to be a little different level. I'd like to turn it over to Mark Aragoni, who has the law. Mark, if you could walk us through the plan and introduce the site.
Okay, good evening again, Mark Aragoni, I'm a licensed landscape architect and manager with SLR Consulting. I am here presenting. I got the lucky straw to present. But as we mentioned before, Dave Sullivan, traffic engineer is online. Andrew, civil engineer, is online. Tom Daly, who I think well, is on vacation in Colorado. But we've all put this plan together with the project team and also very uniquely, because of its location and its past history, I think, with a lot of town staff back and forth. So we feel really comfortable with this, with this project. What you're looking at on the screen right now is a drone survey of a period in time in which the site was becoming remediated, the fill was being placed. I think we've all seen it over the past couple of months, sort of change in appearance from what was a construction yard to pretty much a flat for general terms, although it's not necessarily completely flat, but an area in which a development you can start to see be possible on that site. This slide is a boundary survey, just to outline the parcel. This plan is included in the full plan set. And how I'm going to go about this presentation is I'm going to walk you through a site rendering. Then I'm going to take a few slides just to show you some of the detailed information. Layout, grading, utilities, S and E controls. And then I'm going to turn it over to Jack Kemper to bring you through the architectural design. And I'm hoping we can get through it in about twelve, twelve, thirteen slides. But if you have any questions when the slide's up, feel free to interrupt. I'd love to be able to try and answer any clarification that you guys may have. So site survey, the line that's highlighted in green, I hope you all can see it at the top of the plan, is the wetland line. So we did mention we've been through in the wetlands, we have approval, but I think that's a good line to highlight. That wetland line is actually, the site currently sits the large dirt plateau that was the former yard. Then there's a lower floodplain plateau, and then there's the wetland line. So the site really has the flat area that sits close to elevation of Iron Horse. And then as you move into the site, we drop down to the floodplain shelf, and then we drop down at that wetland line into the wetlands.
Mark, excuse me, we have a question from one of the opponents. Melissa, can you hear us?
I can hear you. I was just hoping that it would be possible for the screen that's being shared in the library to be shared on Zoom as well, because we can't see that.
It should be.
Is that my screen? I can see it.
Share it, Melissa.
I also can see it.
Yeah, I own one more Zoom problem for Melissa tonight. Okay, never mind. Thank you.
It's in the blue. The PDF is two zero two one dash zero seven dash one nine PZC presentation in the Dropbox folder.
Okay, I'll stay on my iPad and I'll go get that off of my laptop. Thank you.
Okay, go ahead, Mark.
Good, thank you. Okay, so we were highlighting the wetland line, and I just wanted to show that as, that's really delineation of the natural area versus that lower floodplain shelf and then the actual former construction yard. The other areas that I wanted to highlight is there's a diagonal line that sort of shoots across the top of the plant. That's actually the floodway line. And then there's a horizontal line, and if I can just approach this, it's going to be a lot easier. So this line right here delineates the floodplain line. So we have construction area, former construction storage area here, lower floodplain shelf that's vegetated down here. Your floodway line is here, and your wetlands line is there. Very important, I think Chris had mentioned before that those floodplain lines have been modified with the BEV. They have, these are the floodplain floodways. Okay. So what we're here to present, you've heard one hundred and seventy-five units, you've heard five buildings. I just want to walk you through a little bit of the design detail. We have two access points off of Iron Horse Boulevard in the site development. The access point in the middle of the site is the primary access. The intent is that we'll funnel traffic in and funnel traffic to the clubhouse, which is situated in the center of the site. The traffic will then funnel either right or left, right or left, two-way streets with on-street ninety-degree parking. And as you travel either left or right, you will see an additional structure. Those are two garage structures. And all the information as far as how many garages we've included on the site plan application. And then that lower loop road system, so just to highlight, main access in, and then we're going to flow around and around with two-way. Interesting point is this section right here and this section right here are one-way flowing in this direction with parallel parking. And what we're doing is we're changing with the design with the roadway. So all whiffs are not going to be twenty-four feet. We have twenty-four feet with the sort of the loop road. We have twenty-four feet with on-street parking. These are eighteen feet with an eight-foot parallel parking. Parallel parking was something that was mentioned in the Sims Berry Design Charrette and in the Sims Berry Design Regulations, Sims Berry Center Design Regulations, and we wanted to try and incorporate it wherever we could. The other area that I want to make sure we highlight upfront is Attorney Williams represented. For the most part, we'll say we meet or comply with the intent of the Sims Berry Center Design. The only area in which we're requesting a little bit of latitude was zero to twelve feet. Here's the property line along the frontage. It's discussed that the buildings, the intent was zero to twelve feet offset off of that front setback line. I think as we look at the plan, we can agree that a creation of a green space, public green space along the trail with the building setback at its closest point, twenty-five feet on this building at the edge, creates that same feeling of an urban, yet not too urban, streetscape feel. So that urban side, as you get into the development, the sidewalk, street trees, parking and buildings, we hit that zero to twelve. But along that frontage, we're at twenty-five feet, it's our minimum, and then we extend backwards into those buildings. So I just wanted to highlight for the intent of the design. So as you can see, flanking the clubhouse to the right-hand side, we have a mail kiosk and a small children's play area. To the left side of the clubhouse, we have a pool area, patio, cabana area. And then behind the clubhouse, we have a very understated patio. The idea was not to complicate the beauty of the space overlooking the wetlands, overlooking the ridgeline. It will be an outdoor patio, tables, chairs, umbrellas, two fixed gas fire pit areas, and then an open lawn area flanked by grill areas for the residents, gas grill areas for residents. The rectangle or the square that you see up top of the site will be an elevated platform that you access from the same elevation of development, but it actually overhangs and overlooks the created area of wetland water quality that I'll talk about a little bit. But that will be a decked area. Okay, a few other items. We talked about the main access. We also have a secondary access, which will be a right-hand turn in the development and a right-hand turn out of the development. The reason for that is there's the existing boulevard there. There's no need to mess with it at this point. We are actually entering and exiting at an adjacent intersection existing and where there's actually left turn lanes in Iron Horse Boulevard. We also have proposed a loop trail system that ties into the existing trail. All the way on the right-hand side, you'll see that loop around the entire back of the development and then tie in to the other side. So I'll highlight that. So here's the proposed walkway. We had it shown as six feet on our submitted plans, but through discussions with town staff and some engineering comments that received, we're going to bump that up to eight feet for emergency vehicles or town UTV. The intent is this is a publicly accessible spur trail off of the existing bike trail. As we get up top here, the intent is we're going to create a gravel, sort of lower, more environmentally sensitive pathway as opposed to a paved trail. And that will meander through a water quality area that I'll talk about in a little bit and a meadow area on the left-hand side. There'll be a couple of sections of boardwalk, and that's to allow for water to enter out of the water quality system and into the wetland area and floodplain area in the back. Some other just quick items, I talked about the garages here, here and here. And what's shown in the site plan over here is a maintenance building and the recycling center.
Why, the boardwalk at the top, that has a little greener area, is that?
Yep, and it's a good question. I'll wait to get into it when I just talk about the storm drainage system. What it is for everybody is there's an existing stormwater out. What it is for everybody is there's an existing stormwater outfall there. We're going to keep and maintain that location with our primary exit of stormwater off the site.
Where was the pavilion? You described it as a platform, I wasn't sure.
Yeah, it's a platform, and we're thinking a shade covering area, open air to allow to take advantage of abuse and give a little bit of protection in the sun and the elements. Okay, so I'm going to walk through, we're going to sort of take away the color of the drawing. And we're going to get a little bit, I just want to make sure we go through the detail of the plan. As you can start to see, full grading plans have been developed, landscaping plans, layout plans. And I want to highlight a few things as we walk through this plan set. Again, layout landscaping plan primarily focused on street trees and creating that street tree sidewalk, street line, street tree line feeling. As you can see, not getting too complicated with landscape beds in the middle of islands. This is intended to be a lawn area along the bike trail lined with street trees. Street trees defining the grid layout of that development, that's where that urban side gets. So I think that if we look at sliding buildings up onto the frontage, you get a little too urban for the area. But once into development, you're going to get, you're going to meet that intent of the Simsbury Center Regulation. Utility plan, as I talked a little bit earlier about water quality. Again, this plan is designed to meet the DEEP standards. It's also designed to meet the Simsbury Water Quality Standards. So it's shown on the plans, you know, we have our conventional pipe system, but it is a treatment train for water quality. And what I mean by, these are, every catch basin here has a two-foot sunk. That's the first round of defense when we talk about water quality. All the roofs that are shown here are also treated with underground infiltration, and that's groundwater recharts, and that's part of your Simsbury requirement, not necessarily DEEP. So that's what these are designating. And then as the water, as we collect all the water and we flow it back to the back end of the site, is where we get to the water quality area. So what we're creating here is an above-ground, three-foot-deep wet water quality swell. So all these catch basins and underground pipe system are collected and dumped into the above-ground water quality system that I'm going to show in a little bit more detail. This is not going to look like a water quality system. The intent is to make it look like an environmentally sensitive, wet bottom, shallow. I know you'd asked a question earlier about how deep, three feet. And we know it has to be three feet because we did test bits out here and we know where the groundwater elevation is. And there's no deeper than what that groundwater elevation is. So for that first one inch of rain, your normal rainstorm, all that water is going to go through a hydrodynamic separator, through a 12-inch pipe, and into this system where I'll show a little bit more detail. Heavy flows, like we got last week, four inches of rain in one night or one day. That obviously will not all fit in a 12-inch pipe going through a water quality basin. There's going to be a high-flow diversion or rear elevation, which will direct it this way and out the existing location, the existing outfall location. Under normal circumstances, where the water doesn't have to be bypassed through an internal underground structure, we want this area to fill up with water. It has two ways to get out. It can either get out through a high-flow bypass here, so that water quality basin will fill up. It will drop down into a pipe when it gets to a certain elevation and then exit out our existing location. If it's a little bit more rain, but can't handle that one, we have a above-ground spillway in that location where it will run surface water over the top. When we get that four inches of rain, like I mentioned before, it goes that way. We call it a belt and suspenders approach to stormwater quality. Again, this starts to highlight the grading that's associated with those water quality, wet water quality swales in the back. This also is highlight our sedimentation erosion control plan. So we are going to be able to wrap this site with S and E controls to make sure that we don't have any erosion off the site. Important point to make, this site has no stormwater quality and has had no stormwater quality of significance yet to date. So all this proposed improvements are enhancing the stormwater quality significantly. A couple other things to consider. Pre versus post impervious conditions. We're reducing it by almost, almost an acre, about three-quarters of an acre, less impervious from what it sat in history. So significant water quality improvements, a reduction in actual impervious surface from pre to post condition. Again, we're excited about this part of the project, but this is zooming in on the water quality feature in the back. So as you can see, here's your three-foot depth, you know, showing wet bottom because we know where the water level elevation is. So what will happen is water will, that first inch of rain or that normal rainfall will come into this system. It'll gradually fill up this area. We have a stone filter burn here. It will then flow into this. We have a stone filter burn here. It will then flow into here. When it gets to that elevation, where it's full, or at that two-and-a-half, three-foot elevation, it will overflow into this structure and out where I showed you before. If it rains a little bit more, it will go an overland flow, which is why we have a boardwalk here. And it'll go over a stone spillway in that location. If it rains a little more, it'll go through the bypass and out.
So wait a second.
Yep.
Still wet. Still is not.
Wetland line, okay, grade change, existing grade change. You can see that wetland line sort of wraps. That's why I wanted to highlight that green line. So all our work is upland of that wetland line. Thank you, that was a good question. Okay, technical drawing. Fire truck turning radius, we submitted a plan using a certain apparatus, fire truck with a wheelbase. We have since modified it based upon the actual Simsbury fire truck. And as you can see, it's highlighted in gray, we can successfully navigate the turns in and out.
Fire truck going the wrong way or the right way through?
Well, fire trucks can do that. So what we did is, we checked all our radiuses, the radiuses are the same, so they would be able to take this turn, which this turn right here is going to be a one-way out for normal flow. Fire trucks can take it. We knew it was kind of tight, so we wanted to check it. Photometric plan, showing light levels. We ran this based upon our light fixture. That light fixture is intended to pretty much match what you have in your downtown area in Simsbury.
Which one?
The colonial style one. So that is a pretty much a general take on the site plan. Again, if we have any questions that you want more detailed answers than a landscape architect, we have a civil engineer on the line and we have a traffic engineer on the line. At this point, I'm going to turn it over to Jack Kemper to go through your architecture.
I will, at the same. Sorry, I still draw my hands, so it's kind of unusual to me. Jack Kemper, Kemper Associates Architects in Farmington. We were charged with sort of taking this, this project and making it look like Simsbury and look like it belonged here. So what we've done is tried to take these buildings and make them appear as each building, each elevation is four buildings. So we really worked hard, we played with the roof lines. This is kind of the plan. First of all, there's, I think you've heard several times, 175 units of apartments. There's 175 apartments. I'm just going to give you just an overview of the, the numbers. Fifteen studio apartments, 83 one-bedroom apartments, 57 two-bedroom apartments, and 23 bedroom apartments. The roof plan shows how we are able to manipulate the mass to look like the separate buildings. So that's, we put the roofs on. It gives us, we have shown, we've left space for solar panels on the roof. So by doing these various cool roof lines all around the building, we can kind of hide those in other mechanical equipment. This, the elevations are kind of where we really started to have fun with this. As you can see, the roof lines, we manipulated the roof lines so that the ends are kind of almost a federal style, but all kind of clean, not reproduction, kind of clean referring to kind of what's here. We've used brick and brownstone. And you'll see more of that when we get the color drawings. We're really trying to sort of have the entrances read as a little more modern, so you can see those. There's three entrances along the elevations. And then we, the first floors, I think Mark mentioned, there are garages in the building. Those face the doors, those do not face the Iron Horse Boulevard. But we really tried to keep those in brick and brownstone, put some canopies over those to get those garage doors in shadow so it doesn't become overwhelmingly garage doors. We really worked hard to get the, the corners, the ends of buildings to read as, as more solid. So the balconies are on the sides, and that's the bottom view is that would be the end building, building and site plan that's facing, facing the Iron Horse Boulevard. This, the colors, we're playing with colors. I think we're going to be going back to design with exact colors. But the construction's hard to calculate, fiber cement boards, composition trim, brick and brownstone veneers. We're looking at doing some metal roofs, you see there on the end. The clubhouse, the clubhouse is kind of my favorite. It's, 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 it's the center of the site plan. If you remember from Mark's site plan, it's kind of the center of the site, but it's kind of low-key. And I've tried to sort of get the feeling of somebody in some Bickford buildings along out those streets. It's kind of the sort of, there's one, the U-shaped ones. And it's comfortable scale, small scale, it's about 3,000 square feet. It'll be a great sort of fun place, meeting place for the residents. It's, we want it to be kind of more comfortable scale. It's got a living room, a kitchen, dining room, a great exterior porch room, a gym, locker rooms, and then there's, Mark showed you, there's a pool and this really nice patio off the end, looking toward the view. And it's designed so you see right through it, see my line going through that, just so you see right to the, to the view. This is the street view. This is the view from Iron Horse Boulevard. So we, I really wanted to get the contrast. I really liked the sort of, the clubhouse. It's, we show it faded because it's set farther back, now it has that line of trees going to it. And you'd have the street trees, which don't really show up very well in our writing, but they're there. So if you really want it to kind of feel, feel like it blocks, like it's part of the center of Simsbury. We've got some metal roofs on there and just a mixture of nice materials, and we're available for any questions. Yeah, I figured the pictures tell the story.
Just a, just a little bit of housekeeping again, Mark here going for the record. I talked about the drainage. We submitted a full engineering and drainage report with the application. I talked a little bit about traffic, but not much. We submitted a full traffic report. Both are showing no negative impacts. The drainage report actually tells you the improvements to the site with this plan and the water quality improvements. And then also, we are in receipt as of a little bit earlier today, some formal comments from your town engineering staff. We have had conversations since we, since we received those comments. And we'll characterize them as very positive conversations about the comments versus where our plans are and what we can accommodate. So I just wanted to say that for the record. And now I'm going to turn it over to Greg Gialdi to close us out.
So my name is Greg Gialdi, and I am one of the partners going forward on this. And I'm also president and chief legal officer of T and M Builder Company. So there's a couple of points that mean a great deal to the development team and something that we're working with the town on closely. The first one, and you've heard quite a bit about it, is the walking trails in the loop, the loop structure. So that's going to be quite enjoyable. It'll supplement what's going with that heavily-used walking trail right down in front of the property along Iron Horse. And it'll, the public will be allowed to go through the property in, on that view, which we as, we have identified along with the town as being quite special. Bringing people back to overlook the workery and to really take advantage. Plus, there'll be a walking trail. It's going to be lesser developed. It's going to be used for only walking and not rollerblading and skateboards and bicycles, things like that. So the issues that are presented, and we've been working closely with the town on this, are how we make it work. So we've agreed as developers to, to look at it and we'll take care of the installation and the maintenance of the paths. And we are working with the town to make it work like other areas in town where we get insulated from liability for the public use. Because we will be allowing people to come through the property, watch weather and things like that, make sure the conditions are proper. But we are working, we've met with the town manager, we started with like, you know, working with the town planner. We've met with the town manager, Parks and Rec, and Public Works as well, trying to come up with the right way to do this, and we continue to explore the documentation that will be needed as we go forward. But it's something that'll really improve this property, and we look forward to it because I think everybody in town will benefit from it. The second item, and one of the things that we also consider extremely important is the affordability. Housing affordability has become such a great issue in this country. When I was chairman of the country, that was my mantra, one of the things we worked on the most. And we plan to bring some affordable housing here. We're, we're doing it voluntarily. We're starting to talk about 10%. And the way we envision this, we're trying to come up with a concept that others will be able to use into the future as well. But we as developers will offer up the property, we'll build, and with the affordability in mind, we'll work with the town and the tax structure, possible abatements or some type of involvement. And we're involving the state as well. We're under a number of conversations with the state, whether it's the voucher system or a couple other things offered through CHFA. I'm on the board currently, and I, I think there's a real opportunity that the state's looking for. Clearly, the town's looking for, and we as developers, both Chris and I have in the past done a lot of the work in this area. And it's something we want to continue, and we see a great opportunity here. So we will keep everybody updated on that. There's still a lot more work to do and meetings to be had. But we felt that it's worth bringing it up at this point in the approval process.
So you're talking 17 units?
Yes, yes. And we're starting with 10%. We're looking at it. That was the one. And one of the things, we're looking at 80% of the median income. There'd be depending on involvement, especially at the state level. Could we look at some of it being 60% median income? We're exploring everything because we really want to have this make a difference.
The big, the big thing about affordable housing from our standpoint is the deed restrictions. Are you talking about having a 30-year deed restriction as the affordable housing statutes require?
That would be, so we plan to do this voluntarily, so whatever that, those documents look like, that's how we would do it. So in other words, if the town participated as well as state participation, the, how we look at and try to.
How would the town participate? I'm not sure. Mike, do you have a chance?
So, so Greg's kind of hinting at the business incentive, our business incentive program allows for some tax.
allows for some tax reductions for the creation of affordable housing. So some of those units, say the 17, may be, may receive a reduction in the taxes if, if they were to go to the Board of Selectmen and request a reduction under the Business Development incentive program. So that would be our participation.
That sounds reasonable.
And then it would count, because then to, to, to basically close the loop, we request that something would be filed on land records, so those units are protected as, they're just set aside as affordable. So then when we file our numbers with the Department of Housing each year on reporting a deed restriction, these will be new affordable units, which voluntarily were given to us by developers. Sorry. This is increasing affordable housing.
We just want to make sure that counts.
Yeah, and now with that, I think, more importantly, you're increasing affordable housing units in the center too. So that's a, that's a bonus.
And the reason why there's still another component to this, because the state has never been active in this before either. So to bring in a third party will make it very interesting and hopefully beneficial. They have different systems where they can identify the use of vouchers, and there's also some other financing that the state, state may make available. New programs, actually, they, right now, the administration's looking at creative ways to do this type of thing, because there's so many communities that don't really have access to, in any way really to create new affordable housing, and we think that this is a great opportunity.
Good. We're happy.
So now I think we're going to open it up for questions. We've got our team here, we've got our team online, if anybody has anything.
Okay, commissioners? Bruce?
Seeing, you know, the document that we're asked to approve tomorrow, next month, what would the state about affordability right now? I can tell us if the state doesn't accept your good intentions.
No, no, this is, this is something that we've been discussing. When it actually happens, it will have to be memorialized on the land records. I'm sorry, I didn't mean to be unclear about that. It's just that it's not completely developed. It'll have a timeframe in there, it will have, it'll probably be modeled after what is used statutorily now in 830G, for example. But I think that we have, because it's voluntary, a lot more creativity here. So that we're going to have some, but, but it'll be properly documented, and depending on how deep everybody and how involved everybody gets, that will dictate that what the 10% looks like, for example. Whether it's 80%, or there's a 5% at 80, 5% at 60, all of these things we intend to explore.
From our standpoint, we would see that we had 17 added units to our affordable housing component. Their financing of that, or support from the state, or tax abatements from the town, are all really separate from our landlord's decisions. As I understand.
Does that make sense? I hear it.
Let me ponder.
Yeah, sure. No, feel, feel free, because this is going to be cutting edge for everybody. Chris and I have been talking quite a while about this, and we are really, we have a lot of outreach going on to the state and town.
We've, we've already made a commitment to 10% and 80%, and it can only get better from there. So you want to make it a condition of approval, that's fine. We, we are putting it on the table.
No, I was just trying to be clear as to what your attention was. I'm not trying to add my own opinion or enhance what the town has sort of seen.
Yeah, even if the house says no, we're, we're still going to do our part. If the state can enrich that, or the town can enrich that, it'll help it go further.
Okay. Other commissioners? Yeah. Like Doyle? Donna? And? Yes, comments, questions?
Yeah, are you accepting comments from the audience?
Public, public question. We have, first, our commissioners.
Thank you.
So all of these units, there's no elevators, these are all walk-ups, please?
At this point, there are no elevators. We've agreed to talk about whether we want to fit in a couple buildings, elevators, but at this point, it's not opposed to have elevators. So won't change the plan at all, other than the interior walls.
That, that would have been my question, was about the elevators, because I would think in a development this large, particularly you're attracting some empty nesters, a, having elevators in the building would be very, a very attractive feature.
Okay. Thank you. Yes, it's considered, and we haven't fully addressed that yet. But this wants to be a little bit more millennial as well, because it's sort of an setting. So we'll open up.
Kind of get directors.
Well, there's also the question then, now that we're bringing elevators up, are any of the units accessible, handicap?
Handicap accessibility?
That's Jack Kember again. Yes, all the first floor units are.
Oh, they, all the first floor are accessible and they have arrangements that could be made for people that are-
The code requires that, they're, they all have to be accessible. They don't have to be built to the specification, but they all have to have the space to do that.
Okay.
Thank you.
And some of those units would have the garage? I'm sorry. Kevin, is the garage on that first floor, or is the garage below that?
Oh, the garage's on the first floor.
So the accessible unit could have access to the garage.
Yes, yeah, accessible units could have a garage. In fact, I think there is an accessible garage, a wider garage.
And the max is three floors?
Yes. Well, there was mention earlier of the E and C.
If I, if I could just add one question. If the, if the elevators are not going to be in all the buildings, then essentially you have, you're, you're just creating a three-story walk-up.
Correct.
Right, that's what they said.
That, that's, I would think for the senior population, or as I said, empty nesters, I would think that's pretty tough in terms of groceries and things like that. If you're appealing and looking for the younger generation, then it's probably not as important.
Hi, thank you for your, your question. Highcroft, for example, is the majority of those buildings, except for the last 20 or 48 town halls. So there's 200 units there that are three-story walk-ups. And it works out very, very well. There are first, there are elderly tenants within that community as well, and they generally, if they don't like stairs, take the first floor units. Now, in each of these five buildings, there are nine units on the first floor that is a kind of walk-in, no stairs whatsoever to get in. So nine units in each of those buildings already are 100% wheelchair accessible into the buildings, and some of those units are going to be 100% wheelchair accessible as well. If we do put elevators in, it does, the code requires us to make all the units in that building handicap accessible. So wider doors, wider casings, a few other, just building code requirements. So it can work either way. It, it would broaden the market a little bit. That's why we'd only want to do it in a couple buildings. But at this point, our proposal is not to put elevators in this buildings. If our marketing says that we need to add that, I think we would add two buildings.
Thank you.
Okay. Any more questions from commissioners?
Am I a commissioner or a public, Dave Ryan?
Who are you?
I'm Melissa Osborne.
Melissa, you are, you are able to ask a question, yes?
Um, so to the point of these being three-story walk-ups, one of the things that I am thinking about, about this development is increasing the bike-friendly capacity of Simsbury. I myself just purchased an e-bike, and I'm thinking about the additional bike traffic and the bike usage that may come with this. And I'm wondering, if this is a three-story walk-up, what are people do, are there accommodations or are there specific places for people to house their bikes? How is that going to work out?
Again, thanks for that. We forgot to say that, but on the first floor of every unit, of every building, there is a large bike storage room on the first floor. We built that, it's equal to, larger than a garage. It's like a 20 by 30 room for stroller and bike storage in each of the building floors.
That's great news. And are you also, have you done anything with respect, this may be a question for one of your next presenters, but with respect to the traffic, the study that's been done, has there been any analysis of the increased bike traffic that will come out of this project? And whether there are existing bike racks and things like that around Simsbury to accommodate it?
No, I don't believe, Mark, is anyone?
Again, Mark here going for the record, and Dave Sullivan is on the line, but I'm going to take a shot at this one. So we, we don't have any proposed bike racks shown on the plan right now. However, we would not be, we would not be opposed to figuring out exactly where the right locations are, even if they were to go, you know, very close to the front property boundary with Iron Horse. I think that's something that we would definitely be in favor of trying to figure out. With regards to the increased bike traffic, that also was a comment that came up through town staff review, in the fact that we are going to put some actual bike traffic signage on the bikeway intersections of our new loop track, where it intersects with actual trail, just to let people know that, you know, you're approaching a bike intersection, not necessarily a vehicular intersection. So we're doing some bike accommodation signage on the bikeway itself, also notifying of the bikeway as they cross the two new driveways, one that's an existing driveway, actually, the bikeway crosses the, the construction yard driveway. That's going to become a little bit more formalized. And then another town staff comment was with regards to, we think you need to do some warning signage for vehicular traffic exiting and entering the actual site driveways, warning them of the bike traffic. So we are going to do some signage for both the bike traffic and before they cross the driveways, for bike traffic before they cross bike, the new bike loop path with the existing bike path. So those are things that we are finalizing and we're going to work out. I don't know if I answered your question, but if I didn't, we'll put Dave Sullivan on the hook.
Thank you.
Are you okay, Melissa?
All good.
Are you okay?
Yes, thank you.
Okay. Public, are there any people here who would like to speak from the public? Please come up.
I'd like to make a couple of comments from the Zoom, if that's possible.
My name is Ron Jodis, resident-
Excuse me, Ron. What's happening?
There's someone else online that wants to speak after.
Somebody who's there first, though.
Okay. My name is Ron Jodis, resident at 16 Iowa in Simsbury. For disclosure, I am also on the Economic Development Commission. I think this is a great project, deserves to be built, and it complies with all the zoning regulations, so I'm very happy with it. One thing I haven't heard mentioned at all tonight is that, does it work with the Simsbury Performing Arts Center? There is a definite requirement for noise, noise can come out of that facility during operations that, if you've read anything on the Oakdale, your fiasco, and also what they kind of felt too was, they had to comply with the state noise requirements, which I think were like 45 decibels, which is, conversation was about 55, so 45 decibels, it's like one half.
Okay, there's, there's state standards, state standards. So I guess that's another question. Okay. We'll let, we'll let them address that later. Let's, features of the other comments. Anybody else who wants to speak?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners. My name is Mark Solly. I live at 29 Knox Road in West Simsbury. I'm a member of the Clean Energy Task Force and Chair of the Sustainability Team. My comments tonight are on behalf of the Clean Energy Task Force. We'd like to commend the developers, Chris Nelson and Griggy Galde, for their willingness to engage with the task force on a range of issues pertaining to sustainability and clean energy. This team is clearly committed to energy efficiency and sustainability, and this commitment is evident in several features, as you've seen tonight in Barbara Cove. As a community, there are a range of steps we can take to reduce our energy usage and transition to a clean energy economy. These include weatherizing our buildings, switching to our light bulbs, putting up solar, transitioning to electric vehicles and heating and cooling. None of these will have the impact that this development of Barbara, that a development like Barbara Cove will have. We will live for decades with the decisions that we're making on the design, on the efficiency and the heating systems of these 175 apartments. Foremost among these decisions, as we've heard tonight, is, pertains to heating and cooling. We law the developer's choice not to heat with natural gas, but instead with mini-split heat pumps. We face a climate crisis attributable in large part to our continued burning of fossil fuels such as natural gas. The single decision not to use natural gas at Barbara Cove means that 175 residences will not be burning this potent fossil fuel for the next several decades. Admittedly, fossil fuels are still used to produce the electricity that will power these heat pumps, but Connecticut is committed to a carbon-free electric grid by 24. Heat pumps are not the only solutions, but they are an essential part of our transition to a clean energy economy. When you're in a hole, stop digging. In addition, the developers appear committed to providing sufficient electric vehicle charging infrastructure for residents. We encourage them to ensure this infrastructure is scalable, as we anticipate a sharp rise in adoption of electric vehicles, as all manufacturers are now committed to this technology. We encourage the developers, also, this was already discussed, to take steps to reduce residents' reliance on their own private vehicles, using things like ample bicycle parking, which they've addressed, and nearby access to public transportation. The plans for Barbara Cove provide for potential solar, potential rooftop solar. We encourage them to follow through with these plans and to even explore ways to provide an even larger share of the residents' electricity usage, either onsite or even offsite. Most importantly, we welcome the opportunity to continue to engage respectfully with the developers on needs and other issues. The Clean Energy Task Force seeks to be a resource to the town, to its residents and businesses, to direct us further along our path to a clean, sustainable economy. Thank you.
Thank you, Mark. I appreciate it. Anyone else care to speak to the application?
Okay, I'd like to, well, you know, Gary.
I'm, sorry?
Oh, John Skylar, 24 Brook Drive.
John Taylor from-
Okay. If I can go, I just, curious, Connecticut's about the, almost the same population exactly it was in 1972, and we're a nation of 170, not 330 million. And I understand that that, that the average household is smaller, and therefore there is a need for, for more housing. And clearly, we should be looking for a more diverse, and I'm talking about economic as, as well as other forms of diversity. So I do appreciate the affordable portion, and I appreciate the amount, intense amount of work and due diligence that has to go into a project like this, on both the board's part and on your part. I'm just wondering, it, it seems most of our increase in development in town has been rental apartments. And this is a unique piece of land near the, near the Performing Arts Center, which is one of the successes of the town. I do appreciate that the Performing Arts Center is supporting it. But I'm, I'm, I'm a little concerned that the original project was also in response to the charrette, was more of a mixed use, which gave certain people also opportunities for equity, for ownership, which is the, the biggest source of intergenerational- um which is the, the biggest source of intergenerational increase in wealth. Um, and I'm just wondering, and I can't believe that you get the same type of community, multi-generational, et cetera, in a totally apartment setting as you do in a more mixed setting as, as originally proposed. So I just curious as to sort of the, the difference and, and the thought of that. Um, it's uh, you know, sorry for the background noise, there's a helicopter passing overhead. Um, but that said, it just seems to me that there were, were better than one more bunch of apartment blocks, and I think the walk-ups also is, is an issue. Um, you know, you've got, you've got different demographics and you've got a big age of people coming in that don't want to run off to Florida. Uh, I certainly don't. Uh, but want to be in with multi-generational communities, and I don't see that necessarily here.
Okay. Did you have somebody door? No. It's hard to uh, it's hard to hear. Uh, Sarah. Sarah Nielsen?
Yep, thank you, Mr. Chairman, thank you Commissioners. My name is Sarah Nielsen, I'm the Executive Director of the Simsbury Main Street Partnership. Uh, usually I work behind the scenes with Mike Liddon and um our development team. Um, and so tonight I wanted to come out and express uh my support for Barbara Cove. I met with Chris about another property in downtown a little over a year ago, probably going on two years now. Um, and as Chris had mentioned at a previous meeting, I think it reinvigorated his passion for doing some sort of housing project in the downtown. Um, and this really is an amazing project. Main Street was an integral part of the charrette. Uh, we not only uh worked with the team, we provided data, we provided funding. Um, so we are fully supportive of the vision and the regulations that came out of the downtown charrette. Um, this project will be the first new construction project of the charrette. It is very exciting. Uh, Chris's team has improved on the initial plans, included sustainability, included connectivity within the downtown and so much more. I think his team did a phenomenal job of explaining, and I don't need to go back over. What I do want to remark on is that the businesses in downtown will benefit from this project. Downtown housing, I think when, you know, you're hearing from residents that are saying, you know, why are we doing more housing or why are we doing more apartments? Downtown housing is critical. It is something that the town should be incentivizing. It helps the existing businesses and our core business base that is there. There are numerous thousands of studies nationally done that showcase that people that live in downtown spend exponentially more money in those downtown businesses. So not only is it great for the residents, not only is it great for um attracting, again, our teachers and our firefighters and some of those others people that may find it too pricey to uh live in Simsbury. Not only is it attracting them, but it is providing a stable base for the existing businesses that are coming out of an extremely hard year, uh given the pandemic. The final thing I'll mention is that there is an unparalleled reputation of Chris and of Nelson Construction and his team. Uh, I just posted today that CT for me has once again recognized Simsbury. We've gotten, you know, dozens, if not more, accolades nationally. Um, they've recognized us as one of the seven best places to live for uh livable, walkable, sustainable communities. Uh, it talks a lot about millennials, which is something that Main Street has been focused on uh as we're entering our rebranding. And it actually mentions Highcroft as um for their sustainable design and in the, in the way. So um I fully support this, I think this is a fantastic project, not just for the community, but for the existing business base. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Sarah. Does anyone else in the public care to speak? Yeah, okay, we don't see anyone. Would you guys like to answer a couple of those questions?
Sure. Greggy Galvey, uh, just to highlight three of the, the issues that were just raised. The first one, Mark was talking about a number of different things, which we see just things that, that we are really concentrating on as we develop these units. Chris and I have spent a great deal of time, and I think that our positions in the industry, both volunteering through the Home Builders Association and just in the state and nationally, there's going to be people that are watching some of these initiatives that we're going to take very closely. And what we really hope to do here is be able to spread a lot of these cutting-edge type of theories that we have and the thoughts we have on the things that we're gonna put in these units. And we have a big multifamily um effort that goes on nationally, but especially in Connecticut now. Um, I'll, I'll jump to that multi-generational concern, and it is a good one. You know, what, what do you need um in a town, especially Simsbury? Well, the fact is, we, we looked at this very closely, and we tried to do as much as we could, as much as we possibly could to address the needs of this town. And the fact is that right now, the demand statewide, but especially in a community like Simsbury, is calling for rental housing of this nature. I mean, it's a perfect spot for it. If you could pick a community in an area and define it as where could we see a cutting-edge project that's here? There's no question, and, and yes, homeownership is important, the American dream, there's no question. But also in the American dream is, is um great housing in great towns and great areas, and that's what, that's what we're providing here. The last thing, um, just the Performing Arts Center, the concern there with uh we have a great working relationship, as evidenced by a number of letters in support that Michael will go through in a second. But we do plan on continuing that. We look at it as a benefit for um our unit renters. And, and our, our community is really going to benefit by such a great uh Performing Arts Center right next door. And it's already started um with everything that's going on there, and you see the crowds that we're getting. I mean, people are just gonna love it, being able to pull up and just watch right next door. So we, we plan on continuing our effort and developing that relationship as we go.
Thank you. Mike?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, you have uh three, three letters or emails that were sent today. The first one, I'll just bring to the records from Missy D'Enzio, the Executive Director of Simsbury Meadows Performing Arts Center. Good afternoon, Mike, I understand that a friend of Simsbury Meadows Performing Arts Center, and hopefully soon to be neighbor, Chris Nelson and his team will go before the zoning this evening regarding proposed Barbara Cove development to the north of our venue grounds. Chris is very kind to share the development information, intentions with us. And we at Simsbury Meadows are very excited about the prospect of this development, as well as Chris and his team's comprehensive vision, vision for the site. We at Simsbury Performing Arts Center have wonderful working relationships with Chris, and no doubt to continue to further enhance our work together for the good of the community, show this project in forward with full approvals from town. In the meantime, in my capacity, Executive Director for Simsbury Meadows Performing Arts Center, I want to enthusiastically share my support with you and the commission. That was Missy D'Enzio. Danuno, sorry. The other is from Bill Clegg. Clegg, uh, we had another client's uh as tomorrow's meeting occurs, otherwise I would enthusiastically endorse Chris Nelson's newest project, having worked with Chris closely in recent projects at Hot Metal Country Club and being on the Simsbury Meadows Performing Arts Center Board, seeing enough how he led us through the construction for there for the ticket booth, I cannot endorse the Barbara Cove project enough. And the last is an email from Linda Schofield. Hi, Mike, I understand the Barbara Cove project is coming up for public consideration on Monday, the nineteenth. As you recall, I'm the Chair of the Board, Simsbury Meadows Performing Arts Center. While the Board has not voted to take a formal position on the project, we have mentioned it in passing on more than one occasion. Because of the new apartments will bring us new neighbors, no one here has ever voiced any objection, and indeed, we expect Chris Nelson will be a great neighbor. We've been, he's been helpful to us in the past in building Ticket Booth Depot and on our facilities committee and sponsoring our events. We've explicitly discussed a desire to be good neighbors to each other and recognize the importance for assuring that the prospective tenants in advance of renting are made aware of Simsbury, we, Simsbury Meadows Performing Arts Center, both as an asset and as a real, realistic as a source of noise. We hope that the latter will be enjoyable for them and not annoying. I'm personally excited to see the project move forward and believe the rest of the Board would agree with my support of the project if I were, were to ask them explicitly. Unfortunately, I'm away and we don't have a board meeting till after hearing, so I cannot do that. Sincerely, Linda Schofield.
Thank you. More questions from the Board?
I think there was a remark earlier that there was gonna be a more detailed description of the power system. Maybe that was done, but it wasn't as much as I anticipated, I'm not sure. But if there's more to be said about that, I'd like to hear.
Sure, um, we can answer things one at a time, that's great. And I'm sorry if I didn't explain it. I kind of lit this stuff, so I didn't probably explain it as well, I should have. Um, but there have been some significant advances in heat pumps in the past ten years. And you may see things advertised at even Home Depot or Costco, they're called mini-split heat pumps. And they can have efficiencies nineteen or twenty-one sear, which is extremely efficient. And then they also don't have ductwork, and so that increases the efficiency even more. Um, so these mini-splits, they would have a compressor on the roof, much like in a conditioner for your house, you have it outside. These would be on the roof, and there would be these heads mounted on the walls. Uh, Europe does an awful lot of this, we're just late to catch up, just like we were late to catch up on um before I even, but these things, yes, you're gonna burn some coal or some natural gas in generating electricity. Um, but it is far more efficient on the big picture than it is to have all sorts of little furnaces going all the time. Um, also, as we, our intention is that at least put up enough solar to handle the uh owner's meters, meaning the street lighting and the community lighting, the buildings, uh, the hallways and whatnot. If we can go further and take some of the affordable units on those same solar panels, we're still digging into that, seeing how far we can go. Um, but the intent is, really, your question was about page B C. But the mini-splits, Mark actually, he has quite a position to stay.
All three floors will bend through the, through the roof?
Excuse me?
All three floors bent to the, to the, to the roof?
No, no.
Okay, that's what I heard you say, I just was checking.
With electric, you don't need vents, all three floors will have compressors um that are up on the roof.
Right.
Um, we didn't want to litter the, the perimeter grass with all these compressors, so we put them up on the roof.
Okay, yeah.
The last related point I want to set reference, solar on the roof. You haven't done any jobs, it's show solar panels on the roofs.
Actually, the architecture showed the roof plan, it shows the solar panels.
I have, I'm. I didn't see that. Did you show that?
Yes, we did, but Jack didn't highlight it really that dramatically.
What, what is your project plan? I didn't hear anything about the timing of this.
Um, we would like to close on the property. Uh, we have to arrange some financing. Um, we have an application uh in the works that approaches one method of financing. Um, that will take a little longer, so we're looking at a little, a couple quicker options. We would love to be in the ground in four or five months. Uh, there's some extra architecture now, if we, with our approvals, if we get approvals, um, there's some extra site work, some extra architecture, um, some engineering to just get everything specified out um and then go to work. That's our objective.
Okay.
We just had, we have one uh final email that was submitted. Um, I'll just read it to the record, it's from Melissa Brett. Uh, I wanted to support the, the residential development on Iron Horse Boulevard, to be known as Barbara Cove. This was originally part of the downtown charrette that Simsbury Main Street Partnership helped spearhead many years ago. And it is great to see some development coming from this. As you know, I'm currently sit on the Board of Simsbury Main Street Partnership as its Secretary. As a mixed-use downtown property owner, I only see positives for property owners with this development. As a business owner, since two thousand and four, I wholeheartedly wanted to express my desire to build up downtown density with residential units, making Simsbury more of a desirable place to live, work, shop, eat and play. Increasingly, the walkability of the downtown will only help all downtown businesses from retail to services as well as restaurants. As a res, as a resident of over thirty years, having Simsbury approved this tech development just makes good economic sense. Thank you for this time and this matter. Uh, Melissa Brett is the co-owner of Weldon Hardware and the Brett Properties, the Weldon.
Thank you. Misses, more questions? Comments? We ready to close the public hearing?
Now may I quickly, so about Mr. Chairman?
Sure.
Well, wait a second, I have one more question.
Sure.
Jeff Shay, World of Wire, has twenty-one concerns expressed very clearly. I, I'm not seeing any response to that, is that? What does that mean? And he offers to go along with whatever we go on with this one, this, there's everyone has his concerns. It's compliant with any improvement plan. Mark, if you want to start first. So, are we gonna get to see affirmative responses to everyone that has twenty-one concerns?
For the record, Mark here going again, I did mention it in my presentation that we received um the engineering comments uh early this afternoon. Uh, we had already had a phone call team to Jeff Shay prior to receiving them, say, reach out, contact us, we'd love to go through them when you get them to maybe have any clarifications, things like that. We were able to talk to Jeff. Um, both engineers on the phone right now from SLR, both Dave Sullivan um and Andrew spoke with Jeff Shay, went through the comments one by one um and had an agreement um that we can address all those comments in a positive fashion. Um, so what we will be doing is we will be addressing those in a formal, in a formal manner, so that we have no problem with those, that comment letter being part of a conditional.
Okay, just so that we're, our terminology is consistent. You're talking about complying with the direction and the changes that he suggests.
Com- complying or clarifying, because some of those were clarifying answers.
Yeah.
To his satisfaction. Correct. It's not satisfaction.
Yeah, and, and uh attached to my staff report, attachment A is kind of a a condensed list of, of the outstanding items, some of which are um actions that the team has to.
But we haven't had a chance to talk about it, I didn't see the twenty-one items on here, no.
Yeah, so um some of them are actions that need to be completed prior to filing the plans. Others are details that need to be incorporated into the final plan sheet. And then there's a few other uh loose set items having to do with um post-permit, like what do you, what do you need to do to get a bill of, post-filing the plans uh for a building permit, what needs to be uh met? So.
The question, the question is gonna come down, what, should we keep the public hearing open until the next meeting, which is the end of September? Do you get these things tied down?
That was, Mr. Chairman?
Sure.
Um, I think our, our engineering team and our clients, and I, I believe town staff might speak for them, but that's my understanding of the discussion. Feel like these are fairly minor corrections or movements of things, or adding a sign, or that are perfectly of approval, that can be submitted to your town engineer, to his satisfaction and, and planning staff satisfaction afterward. They're, to me, they're quintessentially that type of thing that we would touch up when we're preparing plans for a building permit and submitting the information at these stages that uh, that Mike noted. So I, I, I would ask you, let, please let's not delay this thing over those, because we're gonna comply with them. I don't think it's something that needs an initial night of hearing over the months.
I think it's up to the Commissioners and staff to decide that.
Sure. Yes.
I appreciate, I appreciate your decisions.
I said, I was gonna say, well, I'm here.
I said, why are you, but I was going to say while I'm here.
Would you like to speak freely? Go ahead.
Thank you. I, I hope, I hope you all can see why our team and my clients are so proud and we're so enthusiastic to put this proposal before you. I know my clients are gratified by and really appreciate all the statements of support you heard from our community partners tonight. So we believe we've put an excellent proposal before you that satisfies all of your decision criteria. We thank you for your time and attention and respectfully request your approval.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Commissioners, what's your opinion?
Regarding closing the public hearing?
Hmm?
Regarding closing the public hearing?
Or any other kind of, you know. Kevin?
I think I'm ready. I think we can his proposed motion, I think, covers the issues that the town engineer had.
You're reviewing it now. I was surprised here that DRV gave this a positive referral earlier this evening that the colors aren't selected. There was a comment from the speaker who said that they're still experimenting or considering colors. So it just makes me anxious that we don't know what we don't know. What's not in these plans? How, how many other things are there? I didn't know till today when I really started looking at the rocks that there were no elevators. That to me is a surprise. I didn't know Hi-Crop didn't have elevators. I know people that live there think it's wonderful. But we need to adjust our thinking a little too.
But this isn't new. We've been going through this sort of thing for quite a while, and staff has spent a lot of time on this stuff. And we have to rely on Jeff Shay and these other people. I think it's important that we do our due diligence, and your point is right. We should do that. But you know, it's your own, it's our own judgment, each of us, as to what position we think we're in. Kevin, I think thinks that we're at that point. Mike, what's your opinion?
Sorry, I have to unmute. You know, I'm, I'm looking at a lot of the, the concerns and with some of this stuff, they're not going to get a certificate of occupancy without addressing some of this stuff. So there's a, a, a safety catch there for us, and, and some of it isn't really in our purview as, as, as enforcing the zoning code, right? So I, I think our motion covers the town engineer's concerns, and, and I think we have what we need in this draft to accomplish.
Okay. Ian, do you have any comments?
I think I would, I would basically go with the majority vote here. However, I do think Mike has just made some important points that I, I think should be considered.
Anna?
I think I'm, I'm comfortable moving forward. Yeah, I, I think I'm, I'm good. I think they've answered a lot of questions, and I'm comfortable with the staff report.
Okay, I would like just Mike to put it on record what the DRV thought it was and if there were any conditions.
So DRV sent a deposit referral, and the applicant committed to DRV on actually coming back prior to issuing some building permit to, if they had any, to clarify any materials, if they change the color scheme, et cetera. So they've already said they'll be back with more, more details for that board.
But at that point, DRV has no leverage to do anything.
Well, they, they can still influence the building permit process with us because we have done that in the past with, with plus the applicant has committed to, to doing that, so.
Okay.
And, and Mike, just, just to clarify, what design review saw were the hand-rendered drawings that have been updated from the New Jersey company drawings?
Yeah, Jack Kemper's drawings is what they reviewed. Yes.
Okay.
Okay.
I think we had five.
I'll just check into, see which ones were New Jersey versus Kemper.
Okay. Are you still?
Yep, I'm ready. Are we ready to close, still make the motion? Yeah, I move, Mr. Chairman, I move that we close the public hearing on application 2117.
Your second? Let's go in a little second. Further discussion? I think it's, it's fair to say that, that the building code will get a lot of protection in the sense that the details of the engineering stuff is out of our direct control.
I don't know why they bother requesting.
Well, it's what we're asking, what, what we get is a report from the engineer recommending things, not necessarily an evaluation of his competence in doing it. Right? Okay. Anyway, any other comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Anybody understand? Okay, it carries six nothing. This public hearing is closed. Thank you, guys. Good work. Okay, our next subject is the application 2115 of Avon Marketplace Investors for special exception pursuant to zoning regulations for change of use from retail to educational. Anybody have any comments here?
It's, what happened?
It got, it disappeared. It was on. It was in the early agenda.
You're right.
It's, it's on the old, old new business.
It's not a public hearing.
It's not. Yes, under new business. It's the last item.
Because you were using the last one.
I have, yes. All right, burn my old. Okay, the 2115. Want to make a motion?
All right, I, I move to approve application 2115 of Avon Marketplace Investors LLC owner, David Simons, applicant for special exception pursuant to section 4.5 of the zoning regulations for change of use from retail to educational. At the property located at 530 R Bushy Hill Road. Special exception approval is subject to the following condition. One, an administrative zoning permit is required for the tenant fit out.
Give me a second.
I'll second.
Okay, Bruce. Your closest.
Thank you.
Okay. Any discussion? Mike, can you tell us which of our criteria?
Yes.
This particular motion?
So go through the criteria right now. So it is orderly development in the sense that the, the scale, the use, et cetera, will not hinder or discourage adjacent property developments. Should not have any impact to property values. As your next criteria, public safety is not an issue. You know, because you're, it's filling an existing tenant's location, so there's not a fire protection, police protection or other emergency. Traffic, actually from a parking standpoint, it's a reduction of what's the required parking versus the retail. Retail use in this location is 3.3 spaces for every 500. The change of use section is only 2.5 spaces per 500. Landscape, landscaping buffers are not applicable. And the last one, relation to utility systems, this, it's served by public water, public sewer, and we're not seeing a drastic increase, increase in the use or intensification that we've taxed either system, so there's not an issue from that standpoint.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay, any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
None abstaining, none. So it carries six nothing. Okay, the next one is application 2116 storage units on Terriffill Road. Is there a staff report on that?
Yes.
You ready for a motion?
I am ready.
This is a long one.
Okay.
Okay. Move, I'll move to approve application 2116, the Stardust LLC owner, the LADA PC LLC agent for special exception pursuant to section 4.5 of the zoning regulation for the construction of self-storage facility, the property located between Terriffill Road. Special exception approval is subject to the following conditions. Final plan shall incorporate the following. One, stamp and seal for all design professionals. Two, show proposed curb cuts at St. John's Place. Three, plan indicates whether, plans need to indicate whether the 15-foot RCP culvert will be replaced. Number four, spot grades in the area proposed ADA accessible spaces need to be provided. Five, final, final drainage report is, is needed to be signed and stamped by the design engineer. General conditions of approval. One, an administrative zoning permit is required for construct, is required for the construction of project. Two, conditions of approval from the conservation commission permit are incorporated into this application, into this approval. Three, a pre-construction meeting is required with town staff. Before, sub-start of site work, applicant is to schedule set meeting with the applicable staff members. Four, prior tuitions of building permits, applicant is to provide copies of CT Connecticut stormwater. B, provide two sets of mylar's for signature by the chairman. One to be filed on the land records and one is to be filed with the engineering department. And five, the commission authorized the staff to act on their behalf concerning minor modifications to grading landscaping or utility locations. Request for minor site modifications are to be made in writing to planning department staff and approved prior to implementation.
Your second?
I'll second it.
And by Mike Doyle. And Mike Lynn, can you list again for us for this special exception? Just to make sure we've covered everything.
So this, just like the, the last application orderly development, they are, the development will not have a hindrance to the, to the use of the abutting properties. Next, property values, really with landscaping, it will provide a adequate buffer to the residential zone properties to the northwest of the parcel. Public safety, they demonstrated the, that fire apparatus can make turns around the perimeter. So this, this has adequate fire protection, which the, which they worked with the, the fire marshal with. Traffic consideration, they are improving the curb cut off of Terriffill Road by kind of formalizing it versus leaving it a wide-open cut. So this is, this will provide a safer access. And down the road, once we, once we construct the pedestrian trail along Terriffill Road with a, rather than having that wide-open, you know, 100-foot curb cut, when you have that formalized, it, it creates less of a conflict because at least there's a place of refuse for a pedestrian or bike, bikelist. If they, if someone's leaving or entering this property, they can stop versus when it was wide open, basically someone could drive around and it has potential of conflict. Landscaping buffers, as said earlier, they're, they're proposing substantial plantings along the northwestern corner, which is really where the potential for impact to the property owners. In relation to utilities, system, drainage systems, they are improving the drainage system out there, formalizing it, providing some, following this deep manual for LED options for addressing stormwater and really as for sewer and water, really sewer and water are applicable to this. So, but otherwise, it, it meets all your, all the conditions for a deposit finding.
Great. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
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 None abstaining, none. It carries six nothing. Thank you. Next application 2117, Gerard Rovish Corporation. I think we've heard some of that. Is there a staff report?
There is, and so what's there, and I'll, I'll briefly, I'll briefly explain what's there. So, so as I said earlier during the public hearing, there, there's a few stages in just milestones they have to meet, such as prior filing plans upon report as part of the drainage report for, for the water quality swell. These provided, and this, and it's, it's a direct response to Jeff Shay's comments, which they were, during, during discussions today, it was determined that some of these items I'll bring up, a lot of them, it's just clarifying information and/or minor changes that will not result in a substantive change to the overall plan. Information on whether modeling was observed during test bits. Provide calculations, the CN value for rooftop and underground, underground storage drains. Next is just details that have to be added to the final plans. Showing existing crosswalks across Iron Hill Boulevard. Suitable sidewalk ramps and areas of refuge need to be provided. The main entrance, that just gets back to my, on the comment of previous application. Plans need to indicate stopping distances required and confirmation minimums have met. They verbally, this has, has been demonstrated, just we like it on the plans so that down the road, you know, we can point to and say this was reviewed, should anyone have an issue with it. Four, showing limits of the timber rail that be removed in order to accommodate the northern driveway construction. Five, add stop, stop head signs, northern side limits of the property along the bike pedestrian trail. Six is anchoring details should be on the plans with proposed gazebo. And seven is just providing details on the plans and the small footbridge, which is just those over the boardwalks they were referring to, over the stormwater features. Next is just prior issuance of administrative zoning permit. Need written approval from the WPCA for sewer layout, pump house, pump house design and backup generator. In discussion with Tony Piazza, the superintendent of the BCA, they're working out those details with him, but he said that you can, this can be conditionally approved, but that those items will be met for issuance of the permit. Two is just a copy of the, any registration for CT deep concerning the stormwater management plan. Three is posting the erosion sediment control bond of $5,000 cash for the project. Lastly is general conditions of approvals. One is just the standard zoning permit is required administrative zoning permit. Two, conditions of approval of the conservation commission are conditions of approval of the zoning, of the zoning commission. Three, pre-construction meeting is required. They, they'll schedule with staff. Four, sediment erosion control measures are to be reviewed and approved by the code compliance officer, sorry Laura. Applicant is to provide her a 24-hour notice for scheduling ENS control inspections. And five is the commission authorized staff to act on their behalf concerning minor modifications, changes to approved site plan as it relates to landscaping, grading, lighting, utility layouts. Request for the, for modification to be made in writing and approved by staff prior to implementation in the field. And if someone just wants to refer to attachment A of the staff report.
Well, I do have a question for the staff that we didn't ask during the public hearing, so the staff, about the pump house, because the engineer did recommend that and, and the generator. Do we know the location of that? Is it over near the, do we know where it is?
It's shown on the plans, actually.
They didn't point out it's a pump station.
It's behind you.
So which pump station? They didn't point out?
It, it's behind the clubhouse to, towards the northern property corner.
There. Let me show. It was next to the garbage recycling center.
That's it right there.
No, okay. It has a generator too?
A generator is required. So it's got a, it's got a, they, they need to build it to town standards for WPCA's purposes. And then WPCA would like a backup generator, which they agreed to. It's really so that when power's out, the toilets will still flush. So, which is a very important, multifamily housing.
That was the one thing I picked out of the engineering.
Okay.
All right, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion regarding.
Well, you could.
Let me just raise this point that one of the issues with this application is an exception. Question, and was that covered in Mike's language or not? And that after the point of discussion. Don't we need to say anything?
No, we need to go over the list of exceptions.
Seven dash six.
So then.
Well, you do it before or after the motion?
Go ahead. Go ahead and make the motion.
All right, again, uh, application, uh, move on application twenty-one eighteen, um, that the petition be approved subject to the. Using the attachment A of the staff report. Mike went over this.
We have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Bruce. Okay, discussion now. Did we include in the motion the approval?
Is there sufficient language to make it clear that we approved the exception that's requested? Not that.
They're requesting an alternative compliance. Did we say that we approved the alternative compliance recognition?
Yes, it's application for a special exception for alternative compliance.
Yeah, and the alternative compliance was to get twenty-five feet instead of fifteen. It was just that we set back more than the SC five.
Good with that.
That's for the center zone, but it was also the special exception requirement.
That doesn't apply to this. Doesn't apply to Senator Center. Yeah.
Why don't you just still, we'll just still go through those.
Yeah, let's just go through.
What applies is the section of Senator Center. It speaks to that issue, especially. But we don't get two special exception. General regulations and yes, yes.
Okay, we can confirm to the Senator special exception divisions.
Yes.
Yes, yes, Bruce says yes. Staff says yes.
I agree with Bruce.
Okay. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
I, I oppose. None abstaining, none. Okay, pass the six nothing in conformance to the Senator.
There you go.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good luck. Four or five months means quickly. It's eight months, we, you know, we did too here.
Okay, we have application twenty-one dash eighteen of S L Simsbury LLC for additional parking at certain eighteen, certain eighty-one A and. So we need some explanation, Mike. I I didn't understand the drawing.
He's on the, he's on the screen.
We.
TJ. You, sorry.
Who was it about?
Huh?
Very. Very briefly, in our ongoing discussion, we have, uh, three or four open items. Uh, we have the smallest item today for you, which is to re get approval of a site plan amendment to reconfigure the parking lot in the northeast corner of the of the project that Talcat Ridge. Uh, we, earlier, the commission modified by removing some townhomes. We put in an apartment building in its place. Uh, the the ground allows it and the use in the existing use of the property, uh, needs to have or or would be benefited by having these additional net twenty-three plus spaces. There are six hundred and fifteen spaces on the site total. This is a three tenths of one percent increase, but it would benefit, uh, the the users of the site. Additionally, to our application, we've given you a drawing which identifies the contour line of where access road would go to the Farming River. We've been in discussions with the fire company for, since we started the project, but over the last year, it, the fire company very, very much wants to have access to the river there for emergency, uh, use. The line that we've given you on a map shows that it would follow the contour of the property roughly over the area where the sewer interceptor runs and then get down toward the river. It's going to be an application which has significant inland water courses, uh, approval and also significant design. Um, the the owner is going to design it. The fire company wants to be the applicant or a co-applicant. They and we are going to be meeting in the next ten days to try to get, uh, the, a final design. And we'll be back for you if you need to be, but we're going to be at the inland water course is trying to get our permits to do that work there. I think the tragedy on the river, uh, of the last week has has brought to the fore, uh, the reason why the fire company is so anxious to get that development, uh, it's going to be paid for by Silverman, but it's going to be have a full access, uh, rights to use for the fire company and the primary purpose is to have emergency access to the river. You have a site plan from Mike. It's late. Uh, we stand with him on his, on his, uh, uh, his staff report, excuse me. And we stand with him on the staff report. And I want to tell the commission that, uh, later, we're going to be shortly or in your next several meetings, we will be before you with the application for modification of the master plan. Because as we've discussed with you before, we want to have a modification of the use requirement in one of the front buildings. And as we discussed before, we will be back before you with with a a master plan for the south site because it it's going to require a master plan to develop that consistent with the, uh, other master plan. And so we're working on that. And we'll get there to you, but that's what we have for you tonight. Thank you.
There's staff report on this.
Yeah, there there is. And TJ, just maybe that clarified to the commission. Could you just, uh, I have the plans up on the screen. You can see it. Um, could you, could you show them where the new parking lot will be located? As it relates to this building that's shown there, AP one A?
Yes, uh, I've got a diagram somewhere, Mike. I think that the, uh, the net twenty-three spaces, I think, will be to the left. Well, AP one A is the building that is vertically oriented on the site. And, uh, and the net twenty-three spaces will be to the left of the building as you look at it. And they'll all be within the twelve-foot walking trail that that surrounds the property.
Moving my cursor right now, just so the commission sees. I just wanted to make sure where.
Yeah.
It's, uh, these spaces are over here.
Yeah.
These are now. And this TJ, just just so the commission understands the the need for the, uh, additional twenty-three spaces.
The, 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 uh, you know, this is a a traditional neighborhood design. This is a new urbanist type thing. And and, uh, so we have on-street parking, we have parking arrayed in an urban fashion. And frankly, uh, it's unusual to say, but COVID has been a significant benefit to our community. There have been people from New York, from Boston, from all over who have come here. And, uh, we have more cars than we expected.
Okay.
Okay.
And this is just briefly. I know it's in your packet. I'm sorry it's late. The red line here is what he was discussing earlier about the fire access. And I I met with DJ in the fire district and one of the issues was this, is that during high flows, they have trouble getting river access to cup to cover the river south of one eighty-five. So this will provide a new access point for them if they have to do river rescues. So, and they're aware, all of them, that this has to go through the inland wetlands agency if they're construction.
Okay. So do we have a motion?
You do have a motion in your packet with, I think. Let me stop the screenshot and pull up Kevin.
You get it?
You got it?
Yes.
Oh, Bruce says it.
I thought you were gonna.
No, I'm waiting. The electronics slows us down.
Oh, I know. I was like.
Now we'll have Bruce.
So I I make a motion to approve application twenty-one eighteen of S L Simsbury LLC owner, TJ Donahue Esquire applicant for a site plan amendment for the creation of twenty-three additional parking spaces adjacent to the building AP one A and approve road use, emergency fire access to river, to the river per plans provided. In parentheses, assessor map F seventeen, block one fifty-four, lot double oh nine dash three dash two, zone HFBC. The site plan amendment approval is subject to the following conditions. The commission authorized the staff to act on their behalf concerning minor modifications to grading, landscaping or utility locations. Request for minor site modifications are to be made in writing to the planning department staff and approved prior to implementation. A wetlands permit is required for the construction of the emergency access road. An administrative zoning permit is required for the construction of the new parking area and fire access. End of motion.
We're a second.
Second.
Second, Kevin. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Oppose? None abstaining, none. There is six nothing. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Free. Okay, general commission business.
So I I want in your, uh, uh, packet that maybe the members want to look at. There's a presentation from Crowe concerning the legislative update along with a legislative guide from the C C A P A, which is the Connecticut Check for the Planning, American Planning Association. Um, that's regarding, uh, changes to the zoning enabling statute. Um, I think we have to have a discussion about how we want to handle or do we want to do anything regarding the changes that have been made to accessory dwelling units. I I I think in the lateness of the hour, maybe we can discuss this in September and because we have time before we have to do anything.
Every year before we have to.
Yeah, this doesn't, actually, it's January. This this is not effective till January, the change of the, uh, uh, but I think I'd like to have that conversation with the commission. We spent so much time on our regs. Look at the the new statute because if we would like to opt out and have our regs, we have to go through a process, not only having a public hearing with this commission, but also the board of selectmen has to vote to opt out. So it's a two-step process. The other, the other one is, oh, sorry, go ahead.
Go ahead.
The other one is you'll be receiving correspondence from the board of selectmen soon. Um, they would like to discuss recreational marijuana and how or whether, how we'd like to regulate it in town. Because we have two options or three options I could say. We could say no to it in general. We could regulate it by zoning regulations or we can regulate it by town ordinance. Um, and they they would like input from this commission and, you know, whether you want to take jurisdiction or would you like, you'd like to see it regulated by ordinance. So you'll, you will be receiving that request probably for your September meeting to bring this up under general commission business, but I wanted to make the commission aware.
And then we would have our own discussion on zoning and if we had their own discussion. And we will be trading thoughts.
Well, so if, let's just say, similar to short-term rentals, let's say we go, yeah, let's, I think, regulated, regulated by ordinance. We'd like it by ordinance, then they would form a work group most likely and develop an ordinance to address that that particular use. Or if this mission says, no, we, it's a land use, we want jurisdiction, we're going to develop regs. We should start talking about developing regs and speaking to all my peers. What I'm hearing is we probably should talk about a moratorium first before we develop regs because the way the statute's written, if if the community fails to opt out.
Within how much?
Within, uh, ninety day or, there's a window. There's a very narrow defined window, I think ninety days, something. The, um, the use is considered as a retail use and goes anywhere where you allow retail. Unregulated. You cannot say it's something different. Some may say that's not really an issue, but I mean, I think it's a legislative decision that this commission should at least have a have a say on how you want to handle it before, you know, we get to that point where it may be forced.
We should put that number one on the next agenda.
Well, it's ninety days. It started July one.
Uh, no, so it's ninety days from the development of the consumer protection spreads. We still have a little bit of time, but we don't.
Well, I I saw in the papers yesterday, they did, they identified in an article where Camden first and Throes of Dawn, where Avon's and the Throes of Dawn, I think, Arlington was the other town. And one of them, there wasn't talk of anything where it was a moratorium, maybe with a immediate moratorium. But, uh.
Does a moratorium require a poll?
Yes, it does. It's just. So moratorium, you treat it like a text amendment.
We may have citizens regardless of what we think that want to do a moratorium. I mean, not moratorium, but just, uh, you know, can start a drive and have them have a boat and a well and that might be.
I actually, Bruce, that's, yeah, because that's also in the law that if, you know, you had a certain percentage of the electors in town. It's automatic referendum.
Yeah. Okay. So we could spend a lot of time agonizing. This is, I have somebody say, well, I don't want it. They have ten percent of the voters on petition. But I, what I was concerned was just, I I don't mind, you know, if it's a meeting in September or the meeting and whatever, just as long as we have sort of direction, you know, where are we? That's it.
So I can upload the portions of the of the that statute there that have actually direct zoning implications to it, to your packet. And I'll do that before our September meeting, so you'll have all that stuff up, let's say, by the end of the week. And I'll email the commission that it's up on the Dropbox. You have time to digest that before we get together next.
So you just said you're going to take Cisco's work and cut it down to just the stuff that applies.
No, I'm actually going to update, I'm going to upload the the language, direct language from the from the public act.
Oh, okay.
So you'll have that for member recreational marijuana.
So we could regulate it.
Just on marijuana.
Or we could regulate like we do a liquor store.
Mm-hmm.
You know, and you, can you limit the number in town?
So, uh, the the actual statute limits it by population.
The same as liquor store.
So, but it's, uh, twenty-five thousand. Laura, want to try that?
Yeah, that was.
It's it's one for every twenty-five thousand?
Yeah.
Oh, so we could only have one.
You can only have one.
Oh, so get your application and send there, Bruce.
Don't look at me. My wife's not a big supporter itself.
Okay, I think it's time.
And no other correspondence, right?
No other correspondence.
Are you motion to adjourn?
Second.
Second.
Thank you, John.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Thank you, guys.